I now call the February 21st, 2023 Finance Committee Meeting to order at 6:45. Consideration of Claims. Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the claims.
Madam Chair, I move that we consider the claims to be paid in the amount of $205,722.40. Payroll and liabilities for 21023 in the amount of $216,232.53 for a total of $421,954.93.
So moved.
Any amendments or discussion on the claims? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Is there anything additional that the committee needs to review or discuss?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. In that case, we will adjourn at 6:46.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we pray that you guide us always, help us satisfy the needs that need to be met during this meeting, and strengthen us as we make tough decisions for the city of Riverton. Help us all work as a whole rather than as individuals, and Father, we pray that we'll be fruitful in doing your will. Please guide us in this meeting so that we can be productive and let us be effective and decisive in our decisions. Lord, protect and guide all of our first responders and our military, and help keep all of them safe. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Would the City Clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilwoman Lindsay Cox.
Here.
Councilman Dean Pronto.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Mayor Tim Hancock.
I am here. The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Kristi Solisbury and Mike Bailey from tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed say nay. I vote aye. Motion passes. I declare we have a quorum present. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right. Motion by Councilwoman Cox, second by Councilwoman Pronto. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed say nay. Motion passes. All right. Right off the bat, we have Jim Brodal, Tree Board Recognition, Public Work Directors' report.
I'd like Jim up here to the podium as well. Fifteen years of service on a volunteer, as a volunteer, is pretty admirable. You guys have accomplished a lot over the years, and we appreciate your input and your value to the Tree Board.
Thank you very much.
Love to have you stick around.
For more years?
Sure.
I talked to another member today, and he said he thought he was here on the Tree Board for a very long time, and it was 12 years.
Yeah, that is a long time. At any rate, we'd love to present you with a plaque for your years of service. I'll have the mirror if you wouldn't mind.
Oh, come on down with.
Come on down. Come on down.
So before I, I'll be over here to the mic. Before I give this to Jim, right when I was first elected, I went to the Tree Board meeting, and Jim, at that point, said something that I thought indicated he still had a ways to go before he was going to leave. He said, you know, sometime in the future, I'm not going to be here anymore. And I'm thinking, you know, sometime in the future, that has a lot of different meanings to it. When you've been there for 15 years, it might mean five years, but no, it was two months. And I don't say that to demean anything Jim has done. I think 15 years is plenty of time. He has earned his recognition. He has definitely earned a little bit of a break talking about trees once a month. So we really appreciate all the hard work you've put in for the city of Riverton and would present you with this in recognition of 15 years of service and dedicated performance to the Riverton Tree Board. Thank you.
Few people, members that have left the Tree Board. I'm the one that arranged it. So it's nice to not have to deal with this one.
That's right.
And when I left, when I was thinking of leaving, I asked the lady, because Mark Gates standing over here, I got her back because she was one of the original people many years ago when the trail was started. And I talked to her coming back on to the Tree Board, and then I leave her. And I wanted to say it has been a real honor working with all of these dedicated fine Tree Board members. And I'd like to say that, I don't know, I suppose few people would know, but like Sherry Shelley talked me into coming on to the Tree Board to replace the state forestry agent Mark Ellison. That would have been 15 years ago. And I agreed, but I didn't obviously not to replace his expertise. But the only other thing I'd like to say is that, that I think that the Tree Board is a very valuable part of the city of Riverton. And it should continue. And one other thing, if anybody knows where my wife Carol and I live, you can understand the interest in trees. So that's all I got to say about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks again, Jim.
Thank you again, Jim. And one of the things that, I don't know if it was on purpose with Jim, if he, if he had timed it that way, but he sent his letter of resignation not right around 15 years. He sent it exactly on the same day that he took office as a member of the Tree Board. So February 7th, 2008 until February 7th, 2023. So thank you, Jim. All right. And then keeping on with the recognition for our fine citizens and volunteers and police officers now, we've got awards recognition from the Chief of Police.
Thanks, Your Honor. Counsel? All right. First one will be life-saving award, and I'll just kind of read you the little paragraph we've got written down on this. On September 13th, 2018, officers responded to a call for a female who was not breathing and cold to the touch. Upon arriving on scene, Officer Milovich, Foose, Officer Tadwall, and Zimmerman, who obviously have moved on, found the woman to be warm and immediately began CPR. The officers took turns administering CPR for 11 minutes until the ambulance arrived. At that time, the female had a strong pulse and was transported to the hospital. Hospital staff later advised that the female would make full recovery thanks to the officer's life-saving efforts. Move on to the second. It's being recognized for Sergeant Stephen Sullivan, Officer Wesley Berry, and Officer Brandon Brookover, who is currently on vacation in Florida.
Rough, rough time.
On May 24th, 2019, Officer Brookover, Officer Berry, and Sergeant Sullivan responded to a call in regards to an individual trapped in the canal. Upon arrival, they observed a male to be trapped in cold water and a swift current. The male was unable to follow officer's commands due to a state of shock. Officer Brookover was able to secure a grip on the male victim's hand, but the male, fearing for his life, had overwhelmed by the temperature of the water, refused to let go of that canal's safety gate. Officer Berry immediately gripped Officer Brookover's belt, helping to keep him secure, adding momentum used to pull the male. At this time, Sergeant Sullivan grasped Officer Brookover's free arm, and the three of them combined their efforts to pull the male victim out of the surely fatal situation. The three went above and beyond, showing an overwhelming amount of bravery, empathy, and strength. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chief, could you tell us the names for the first citation? I was, none of them were here.
They were not.
Could you just tell us the names again?
Officer Milovich, Sergeant Foose, Officer Tadwall, and Officer Zimmerman.
Thank you. If we could just have a round of applause.
Okay. The third one will also be a life-saving award. I present it to Officer Jonathan Jack Johnson. On November 24th, November 21st, 2022, Officer Jack Johnson responded to a medical assist call, which an individual was reported to be in cardiac arrest. Officer Johnson arrived and found an unconscious and unresponsive male. Officer Johnson correctly ascertained that the individual was suffering from an opioid overdose. Officer Johnson quickly and appropriately administered Narcan. The individual became responsive and returned to health. Officer Johnson's quick thinking and execution of his trained skills saved the life of the young male. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So it might not be something that we talk about a lot or that there's a lot of recognition for. Some of these were overdue, as I think the Chief rightly pointed out, but we have an incredible group of people that work for our police department, and I thank you for every day spending hours out there doing what really amounts to often a thankless job. So hopefully, some of the thanks from the community here tonight and going forward, hopefully that can make up for some of that, that it's not something you get a lot of recognition for. But you do a really good work. You're appreciated, and you're really just an important part of what makes Riverton great. So thank you very much for your many hours of work. All right. Moving on. Communication from the floor, citizens' comments. So anyone in the audience wishing to address the counsel regarding an item that's scheduled for a public hearing can speak during that public hearing. If you want to speak about an item that's not currently scheduled for a public hearing, please come on up. The microphone is here. The only thing I'd ask is that you identify yourself for our listening audience, both here and electronically, and just let us know what you're thinking of. So is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak? Okay. Well, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Would the City Clerk please read the consent agenda? I'm sorry. Oh. There goes Officer Larson. He just had to make sure we knew he was leaving. Would the City Clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, February 7th, 2023, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, February 21st, 2023, Finance Committee Meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee Recommendations for February 21st, 2023, and an open container permit application submitted by Addison Appelin for rehearsal dinner at Sunset Park on September 15th, 2023, 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Are there any items requiring further discussion?
Your Honor, the Finance Committee met earlier before this meeting and agreed to pay consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $205,722.40. Payroll and liabilities for 21023 in the amount of $216,232.53 for a total of $421,954.93.
All right. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Pronto, second by Councilwoman Cox. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. The opposed say nay. Motion passes. Consideration of Ordinance Number 23001, Third and Final Reading, the rezone for the Woodridge Estates Community Development Directors' report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor, Counsel. And we're looking at this for the third time. The Woodbridge Estates Block 1, Track 1 is a corner lot at the intersections of Pure Gas and Webbwood Road. The lot is located on the north side of a majority residential subdivision. Lots to the north of this lot across Wood, across Webbwood are heavy industrial and agriculture. Lot is currently zoned as planning neighborhood shopping district CP, and the petitioners are requesting to rezone to C1. I'll apologize for my voice. It's probably going to be gone by the end of the night, but we're working on it. I printed up in the, in the report this week, I printed up the regulation, the use regulations for CP and C1, and I highlighted the, I highlighted the use regulations in CP that I was going to read over real quick. So just so everybody was kind of, kind of aware of what CP usage actually designates. And so under, under CP, the use regulations state, these are the only types of use that are regulated to be used under there. Retail sales conducted within a permanent building, personal services conducted from within a permanent building, bank, saving and lending institutions, and professional offices, human healthcare facilities, and public parking lots. F and G, multifamily use, and accessory buildings are standard on all commercial, on all commercial type lots. And then when we look at the intent and purpose of CP, it is the intent of the planned neighborhood shopping district to permit retailing of neighborhood convenient commodities and other personal services which are needed for day-to-day living. Density and intensity of use may be considered low to moderate. Uses in this district are intended to be compatible with adjoining residential districts. And when we look, and one last thing, when we look at lots from C1 to CH to CP, any of the commercial categories, when we look at the traffic studies and the traffic plans, there are no, there are no intentional differences in traffic plans or traffic studies between C1, CP, and CH. They're all, they're all intended from a 30,000-foot view to have similar traffic, traffic implications. And at that time, I would, I would open for any questions. I know, I believe we have the developer on the phone again this week as well. Kimberly's got him on hold over there. So when we get to discussion and questions portion, he'll be available for any questions. And then their representation, Don Wilhelm is also here to answer any questions from the engineering and planning side.
Thank you. Would the City Clerk please read Ordinance Number 23001 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed Ordinance Number 23-001 on Third and Final Reading, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the city of Riverton, Wyoming, designating the rezone of Woodridge Estates Block 1, Track 1, final plat replat of lots 3 and 4, and the vacation of platted easements with lots 10 through 15, block 16, and all of block 17, city of Riverton, Fremont County, Wyoming, from planned neighborhood shopping district CP to commercial district C1.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 23001 on second reading.
Third.
Third reading.
So moved.
My notes say second, but I know it's third. Motion by Councilwoman Cox.
And I'll second that.
Second by Councilwoman Borders. Any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Originally, that area was, was developed as Woodridge Development, and those specific areas were all townhouses. The CP was adopted for item F, multifamily uses as accessories to principal use, providing they do not occupy more than 50%. And they don't, and so they meet all of that guideline. The property, though, that we want to rezone to Commercial 1 is bordering on the part of the city's flood plan for the rest of that subdivision drains there. And I'm wondering if they're aware of the potential bogginess of that ground. Secondly, the, the usage, where it says it's, you know, small developments and groceries-type facilities, Walmart is less than 5/10 of a mile away from there. So that wouldn't be a wise use of their capital. Secondly, there is also going to go in behind Walmart. The tribes are, have developed and are going to develop subdivision in that area. The only commercial part in that total area is one propane tank on the, behind it, and another one on the corner on Pure Gas Road. The rest is all residential. Up Webbwood, all the way to Smith Road is residential. The property east of 16th is also duplex, 25 by 105-foot properties all along 16th, next to Weber's Farm. So that is just a sore thumb. There is no like, because it's zoned that way, was not for public or for retail sales. It was for F, multifamily usage. Yes, that's where it fits. But there's, there's no use for any of that banks or savings on loan or human healthcare facilities. It just, it just fits into that storage. But there's no use for that because of the closemity of the other businesses. There's a bank on federal. There's two banks on federal. There's Walmart. There's the going of the hospital. So it's just not proper usage for the land. It's residential. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilman Larson. I guess, I am curious to what extent it was known of, I guess just the water that you're going to get in that area. I'm assuming that's been discussed and understood. We have, did he get on the phone?
No, he's, he's still on.
Mr. Short are there?
Yes.
Address that concern.
On development.
Minister Larson?
Uh, yeah, just the, the particular nature of the site itself and the potential, I think, saturation of the ground. I think we would obviously look into that further, but we do understand that that is a situation, especially on the backside of the site. You know, we were the developers of Woodridge Apartments behind there, so we do have some familiarity with it. We haven't specifically jumped into the details of that, but, you know, we obviously would, you know, consider that as we move forward. And Don with Inberg Miller might have something to add there. But, you know, preliminary, looking at the site, we feel like the use that we are looking at pursuing there could accommodate, or the site could accommodate.
Did you have anything to add, Ms. Wilhelm, or no? If not, that's fine. I'm not trying to make you have to come up. I guess I have a little bit of a question. I mean, we're talking about, from what you had read of CP, you look at the use regulations for C1, that's a lot broader. I mean, not just a little bit. Motorized vehicle home, or sales and services, mobile home, manufactured home, travel trailer sales and services, facility for repair of items, parking lots, parking garages, bank saving, builder supply, motels and hotels. It's just much broader, even up to and including light manufacturing, too. Is that correct, as I'm looking at that, Mr. Miller?
Yes, that is correct. Light manufacturing to, to an extent, yeah.
Pet shops, not containing facilities for boarding animals. It's just broad. I guess I, I just want to make sure, Mr. Miller, the proposed use for this would not be possible in a CP. Is that correct? be possible in a CP, is that correct?
Correct. Yes, the, their proposed use has a couple of different, excuse me, has a couple of different contingencies that have issues. Another issue that I didn't read off, because I didn't get back to the right page, is the normal business use hours in a CP district are restricted by, are restricted by time, and I don't, I know I have them all printed off here, but I don't have it. I don't have it in front of me. I believe it's by 9:00 PM. But, so CP is, CP is designated as use during the daytime only, designated as commercial use during the daytime only. And the, and the multifamily contingency is only, is only multifamily contingency for 50% of the, of the property on that lot. So for example, you can have a, you know, you can own a restaurant and have two apartments in the back of the restaurant, and as long as the rest, as long as those two apartments do not contain more than 50% of the square footage of under roof structure on the property, it doesn't allow for multifamily-like apartment, apartments in any concept unless there's, unless it's surrounded by a business of use. And then it also has the intensity of use regulation, which is the use of no more than 40% of the total area of the square footage of the property to be used by its structure is also a regulation in CP that restricts the use and type of uses is to which they want to do.
So you could, not only are you changing the intensity of the use because a CP is low to moderate, but C1 is moderate to high, but you're changing the amount of property that they can use, you're changing the hours that they can be using it as well. I mean, this could be.
Residential.
Right. I mean, you could be doing repair of motorized vehicles, so not only motorized vehicles, sales and services, but repair of vehicles that could be running all hours of the day? Am I correct theoretically?
Correct. And C1, yes, there's no, there's no time, there's no time limit or use limit for any, any C1 zone in the city of Riverton.
Any other discussion?
Your Honor, I just have a question, and I'm not very familiar with the zoning, but you're talking convenience stores, so what about fuel? Could the possibility be there that they might want to put tanks in the ground and, and do fuel?
Ladies, this is.
On any, on any commercial, on any commercial zoned property, there is the possibility of, there is the possibility of doing that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So it could be fuel if it were CP or C1, either one?
Correct. There would be no, there would be no restriction on, on either property as current zoning rules state.
But CP would restrict fuel sales to, you think nine o'clock? Is that what it was that you?
Yeah, I have it here. Just let me pull it up in a second.
We're not trying to rush you.
I know that it's, I know that it's listed right here.
Take your time.
Just don't have us here until nine.
We get home before we get snowed in. If we camp out there, it's already cold.
We have that space.
It's crazy.
There is, there's a time restriction.
I'll bring space eaters for you now. Of course, then it'll be 90 degrees.
Right. It's freezing.
It's just not used.
Yes, sir.
If I may, section 1752-120 addresses business hours in CP. Says business operating hours between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM must be approved by the city.
Okay. I just was looking at 1752 and?
Correct. I did not, apparently I did not include one, include the last four stipulations in the CP regulations I put in the notes.
That's okay.
Why I can't find it.
That's okay. So I, it, it could be running later as it stands now, but it would just be something where they'd have to come and talk.
It'd be a term of council. Yeah, it'd be a term of planning commission, council use, yes.
Right. Any other questions or discussion?
Your Honor, I would say that that area is really close to residential neighborhoods and future possible expansion of presidentials. We have to be a little bit careful in changing that designation because it could, I mean, somebody could move in there and actually just have things running all night long, and it's already kind of a, it's already kind of loud in that area with a lot of traffic with Walmart and school and everything else, so that might hinder that as well.
Right. Well, I guess we could go about this a couple of ways, and I'd invite the council to consider it. If there is a consideration that this might not be, so, while I was on the council before, we ran into an interesting situation where we actually voted for an ordinance. In order for an ordinance to pass, you have to have a majority of the council, not just a majority of the quorum. So I guess I would note that if for any reason on this vote, it doesn't reach a majority of the council, then it would fail. I guess just as a point of something that I learned a couple of years ago.
Your Honor?
Yes.
What about tabling it and, and talking about it at a later date?
If, if you make a motion for that and if it's seconded, that actually is something that we consider without discussion, and it could be useful because we'd have the full council here. I know having been there when things have been voted on when you're not there, it sometimes is a little bit discouraging to not participate, so.
Mr. Mayor, I move to table the third reading until we have a full city council to make the decision, have discussion on it.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Okay. Motion from Councilman Pronto, second by Councilwoman Borders. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Any opposed, say nay. We'll table it. I guess generally speaking, when it's tabled, it's not, it's just until the next regular meeting, so we'll consider it the next meeting. Thank you. I think that makes a lot of sense. All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming on. You're welcome to stay on, but you can also hang up if you'd like.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You, too. All right, public hearing and consideration of 2023 through 2024 liquor license renewals, city clerks' report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor and council before you tonight for your consideration are the annual liquor license renewals that have been submitted for the licensing term of April 1st, 2023 through March 31st, 2024. Annually, each liquor license holder is required to submit a renewal application to the licensing authority, which is the city of Riverton. This year, we received 31 renewal applications. Those applications contain 22 that are retail licenses, two that are club liquor licenses, six that are restaurant liquor licenses, and one that is a bar and grow. The renewal fees have generated $39,000 in revenue to the city of Riverton this year in addition to any sales tax revenue that are generated throughout the year. City staff in the Wyoming Liquor Division have certified the applications as complete. All of the license holders are in good standing and have not had any violations. The proper fees have been paid and proper notice to the public has been advertised. Based on this information, staff recommends approval of the 31 liquor license renewal applications as presented.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Larson, second by Councilwoman Borders. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I now declare the public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. If you would like to speak, I'd ask you to come to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Is there anyone who wants to address the council on this matter?
Your Honor, saying no, and I move we close the public hearing.
So moved.
A motion by Councilman Bor, Councilman, Councilman Pronto, second by Councilman Larson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I now declare the public hearing closed. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the 31 liquor license renewal applications that were submitted to the city council as indicated previously.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Cox has the motion, Councilwoman Borders with the second. Any discussion? Questions, concerns? I have a question. Have we done any, oh, what do we call it? Operations where we're basically making sure people are not selling to underage individuals?
Sting.
Sting?
Your Honor. Compliance.
Compliance, thank you. I knew you would know, would know the word. Chief, have we done any lately in the last year?
Your Honor, we have not.
I'm not saying that that's like a, a condition of approval, but I just was curious. Thank you for reminding me of the word. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion pa, or all opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Okay, all right. In, grant application for police body worn cameras. Chief Romero, if you could give us your report.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you for coming, ladies.
Before we use a staff report requesting your approval for a 50/50 matching Bureau of Justice Assistant Grant for Small, Rural, and Trouble Body Worn Camera Program. The current body cameras have become outdated and are having battery issues. The batteries are no longer available in this model, so we'd like to replace them with a new version. We'd like to purchase 20 cameras and nine additional mounts for a total price of $11,740. The cost would be absorbed under Tools and Supplies, which would expend that light item, but will ultimately be covered under personnel. With it being a 50/50 match, it would be at a cost of $5,870 to the city. Thank you for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to authorize the Police Department to submit a grant application for the body worn camera program to procure 20 new body worn cameras and nine new body worn camera mounting systems.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Larson, second from Councilwoman Cox. Any discussion?
I think that's a savings of $5,600 in attorney fees. Nothing wrong with attorneys, Your Honor, but, you know, a picture, a picture, and, and those just, you know, they frame what's going on, and we need to protect our officers.
I agree, Councilman, Councilman Larson. Man, I don't know what's going on with me tonight. There's a reason to just say council member, then you don't ever say it wrong. I agree. I, I mean, it's, it's really something that I think is important for our officers, it's important for our citizens, I think just all around. It's definitely something that comes in handy. I, I think you're exactly right. A picture is worth a thousand words, and that.
They've been very valuable to us so far.
And we still have, the ones we have still, for the most part, are operable, it's just that we can't replace the batteries as they're dying.
Correct. For the most part, they are. We still have some that they can't even leave on during their shift. They've got to shut it off because if it remains on, it'll, it'll be dead, and they've got to go put it back on the charger for an hour or two before it's usable again.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, or yes, I vote aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. All right, I'll try to not have my mouth move faster than my brain for the rest of this meeting. Public hearing and consideration of ordinance 23-002, first reading replat and annexation of the JAC addition. Community Development Director.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, counsel. The petitioner, Jack Miller, requesting plating annexation of the JAC addition. The proposed parcels are already adjacent to the current city limits. It is located at the corner of South Railroad Avenue and West Monroe. It is proposed to annex into the city with two lots, Lot One and Lot Two, both zoned light industrial. Utility, I won, sorry. Utility reviews were sent to all utilities with no exceptions noted. The neighborhood notification process is, is somewhat void in this area because it's such a, it's such a far-reaching peninsula into the city that there's no, that there's no outside of the half-mile radius of neighbors outside the city limits. The proposed, the plat that is provided to you, that is provided to you shows Lot One and Lot Two there, this is, there's currently business going, there's currently business going on there, and it's just, there was looking at, looking at replating and sectioning out that land when we started the discussion of proposed annexation at that time. Utilities are already in place, there were no issues with utility reviews from any utility company existing or in the future. The owner of the, owner of the property is here for any questioning, and I, I'm also open to any questions from counselor, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Chair would, I'm sorry, would the city clerk please read ordinance number 23-002 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 23-002 on first reading. An ordinance annexing the JAC addition Fremont County, Wyoming, not previously annexed to the city of Riverton, designating the zoning classification of the parcel and amending zoning map to reflect the same, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilman Pronto, second by Councilwoman Cox. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I declare the public hearing open. The hearing's going to be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. If you wish to speak, as to this proposal, I would ask you to come to the podium and identify yourself for the record. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak?
Your Honor, saying no, and I move we close the hearing.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pronto, second by Councilman Larson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
I vote aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I now declare the public hearing closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 23-002 on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Cox, second by Councilwoman Borders. Switch the page. Any discussion?
Your Honor, are, are, are this as, excuse me, is this property receiving, are we servicing them with sewer and water right now?
Mr. Miller?
The, the main structure for Groen Dyke, for Groen Dyke Transport is feeding off of an existing well that they've had for, for years and years, but I do believe, I do believe they have, they have city sewer already.
Do you want to address that? You're welcome to come up if you'd like.
Counsel, my name's Jack Miller. The Groen Dyke Building is served by city sewer. The other piece of property that is on the same plat, it's two individual shops, completely separate with their own outbuildings. The other one is served by water, sewer, and sanitation with the city.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Yes, sir.
So what would be the advantage if you're, what, what, why would you want to be in the city of Riverton versus what, what improvements is, I'm just curious?
It just makes sense. The surrounding facilities are all zoned like, and we're so far into the city already proximity-wise on Monroe, and I wanted to replat this, and I was told that it was much easier to deal with the city of Riverton than the county of Fremont.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm glad we have that. That's not a bad reputation to have, I don't think.
I'm working on it.
That's good. Yeah, that's a compliment. So, thank you, I appreciate it. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. All right, fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget calendar, the highlight of our meeting thus far. City administrators' report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. And since it is the highlight, I plan to take about 20 minutes on that, if that's okay.
Sounds good.
Levity aside, we're coming very close to our annual budget process, and we like to be as transparent as possible through that. And, and part of that is the opportunity to publish to you and then also the community our calendar of how we will, um, receive requests from our various departments. And then we, as senior staff, will organize them and then present them in a manner that hopefully is pleasing to you. Statute really dictates some of the schedule that we follow. Uh, Statute 164104 states that municipal departments have to submit their budgets by May 1st. And then we have opportunity as staff to review those and ensure that they're responsible. And then statute does say by May 15th, we have to, uh, deliver those requests to you as a governing body to review. Uh, the statute also explains that, and this is 164109, states that the governing body has to hold a budget hearing no later than the 3rd Tuesday of June. So those are our benchmarks by statute. Um, you'll notice in the calendar that's in your packet, we, um, will get started much sooner than that. Um, and I want to thank Ms. Mia Harris and the other members of our senior staff team for working on this calendar and reviewing it. Our goal, as you'll notice, is to have our final appropriation review, um, by April 27th. And that'll give us plenty of time, um, to prepare, uh, what we need to prepare for you by that May 15th deadline. Obviously, as members of the council, you are invited to attend the meetings as denoted in the calendar. And then we will do our job to make sure that, um, we notice through the, uh, the paper that there, there could be potential quorums at those meetings. Uh, we invite your participation. We also invite your feedback. So if there's anything on this calendar that you would like to have changed, please let us know. And we'll, we'd be happy to consider that. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the budget palan... calendar as presented.
So moved.
Second. Councilwoman Cox has the motion. Councilman Pronto has the second discussion. I guess I have a question. In terms of if, if public were wanting to be present and know a little bit about the budget process, be able to understand what's going on in the bu... budget process, I guess where would we encourage or invite public to be present if they want to get a bit of an inside look at things?
Your Honor, I, from my personal opinion, those items that are denoted to have the council there would be an opportunity for anybody from, from the public to be there, since it will be noticed. There would be a potential quorum. So on those states where it does state that the council, in addition to the other members of staff, would be in attendance, that the public would be invited.
And then we're going to have the work session for the community service contracts, April 11th. Um, and then I guess at that next meeting would be when we would vote on that. Is that correct, that you're thinking the next, what would that be? The April 18th meeting would be when we would? Well, no, I guess that'd just be a part of the budget process, that we would decide that. So we'd have the work session, and then we'd go through and discuss that as it goes.
Your Honor, that is correct.
Okay. I was just thinking of Edge. We were talking about the, having the presentation and then voting on it the next meeting, and Ms. Harris was there. She knows what I was thinking. She was nodding. Uh, okay. All right. And then, uh, as we get closer to time, we'll have times for these. This is just a general calendar for the dates. Is that right?
Uh, yes, Your Honor, and, and we'll be sure to make sure that those, sure those are updated. But we did set a time, and Mia, will you please remind me when we were planning?
2 o'clock.
2 o'clock. I was gonna say 1, so.
Well, I'm glad she's there. Well, this is a lot of work every, every year, and it, it just almost seems unfair. You just get done with the audit, and then you have to start getting into the budget. Then we have to start talking about amendments. And you get this little break of practically a month before you're right back into it again. So I appreciate all the hard work from the Finance Department. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. All right. Council Committee Reports and Council Members Roundtable. Why don't we start with you, Councilwoman Borders?
Your Honor, I have not attended any, uh, meetings since our last council meeting. Um, I did want to go through the Go Riverton webpage. GoRiverton.com. There's all sorts of good stuff coming up. We've got dodgeball. Um, there's a play at the College, um, The Sound of Music, I believe. Bingo night, you name it, uh, forage, uh, meetings. So GoRiverton.com, and I encourage everyone to go out and check out that website.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cox?
Um, we met with the Senior Endowment Board last week, and things are running a little smoother there. Some of the repairs that have been made are helping. The heat is staying on consistently, so that's a good thing. Um, the Boys and Girls meet tomorrow via Zoom to discuss their upcoming breakfast event, so I'll have more details after that meeting. And I wasn't able to attend the Edge meeting, so... That's all I've got.
Thank you. And the Boys and Girls Club?
Advisory Committee.
And that's gonna be the breakfast that's going to be next? That's the one for Judge Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, good. Good. Councilman Pronto?
Um, Your Honor, a couple of, uh, comments, and then, uh, one meeting I attended. But I do want to thank, uh, city staff for, uh, taking care of our streets. Um, down on 16th Street, it was, uh, the ruts were so bad, they were eating small cars. In fact, uh, we'll probably find them this spring. But, uh, the city came through with their, their blade and took care of just a ton of the ruts that were down there, and that intersection on the way to, um, to the school was, uh, was a huge help. Of course, the last couple of days are 47 degrees, uh, didn't hurt anything either. But, um, I'm not sure where all the water is gonna go, but I hope it's away. I did attend the Airport Board Meeting last Friday, uh, where we, uh, discussed, uh, or received a capital plan update from JVATION. Staff presented on the upcoming master plan study and a required consultant selection process uh, that's outlined by the FAA. And it's, it's interesting that the existing master plan was completed in 2011, and I was there. And, uh, it really doesn't feel like it was that long ago, and, but yeah, it's, uh, every 10 years, right, Kyle?
Yes.
Yeah. And it's, uh, due for, uh, for re... overhauling or renewal. And, um, and then, uh, Mr. Butterfield also shared, uh, kind of a preview of some marketing videos that are kind of cute and, and fun, so, um, payments are on track, and we're looking good. Other than that, I have nothing, Your Honor.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Larson?
I attended the same airport meeting and, and, uh, you know, we're darn lucky that, uh, Fremont County supports our airport. Their airport, not ours, their airport, Fremont County. And, um, I thought that the, uh, presentation, Kyle was kind of sneaky about it. He made sure the press wasn't there before he opened it up and showed it to us. But, um, uh, I, I think we're just lucky, being as, here we are in a weather situation, and we can get in and out of Riverton. With South Pass closed, with Togadi, with the road to Casper, uh, we can get out. That says, that's volumes for business, for airport, for helicopter, for safety, for hospitalization. That's just one of the many things that makes this place good to live. The second thing is, because yesterday was a holiday, we didn't have any solid waste, so I have nothing to report on that, but that there is money to watch over our solid waste. There is one question, though, that, uh, that I failed to ask during the financial. We have a potential down at the ball field. Underneath the ball field happens to be previous solid waste. But it's locked in tight gravel formations, which is unforgiving, meaning it would rather be flooded with water and starved and die than give up the minerals and pass them on. So I've asked, um, uh, the city manager to send me a copy of that from, uh, the engineer study so that we can see just how good that is, because digging that up is not an option. That is just the, that's the atomic, that's bad. Because once you dig something up, it's yours, everything surrounding it. The thorium that you discovered, the new thorium source, that's, it's just a never-ending nightmare. So, anyway, I look forward to seeing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. City Administrator?
Thank you, Your Honor. And, uh, Councilman Larson, that report's in your inbox. And if any other, uh, council member would like to have it, it's 151 pages. And, uh, if you'd like it, we can send it your way.
Light reading?
Light reading.
You have any issues going to sleep?
And we have Ms. Dawn Wilhelm here in the audience as well, and I'm sure she'll be able to give us the Cliff Notes version.
Your Honor, I have a question. Why would we be digging it?
So, Mr. Chairman, I can answer that just in a, in a brief way. What Councilman Larson was requesting was our semi-annual methane monitoring that we do, and we've done that for a lot of years. Separate to that is, um, the landfill contamination question that we've had for a number of years as well. And we've explored the option to treat that contamination through a process called phytoremediation. We're still in our pilot study of that. If that pilot study proves to not be effective, then we'd have to look at options to remediate that contamination, and one of them could be a, a dig and haul scenario. Another would be a pump and treat scenario. And we don't love either of those, and, and that's why we've invested in this phytoremediation study.
And, Your Honor, if I can make another comment?
Go ahead.
On the REC board, we're talking about doing, uh, actually putting some money into those fields. Is now not a good time to do that until we make some other decisions? Or how might that play into it?
Your Honor, Councilman, I think you can move forward confidently to make some improvements, particularly on the west fields. The east fields, they do have some, um, surface, um, aesthetics that have been impacted by those landfill cells. In fact, if you look at the softball fields, you'll see where there's a depression, where the landfill cell has compacted over the years. So I, I think, despite my first statement, some wisdom needs to be made with those investments, but, um, I know the Little League Group has made some investments recently, and then even through the years, and they've been good, valuable investments. It's the east fields that you, that we might want to think about before investing in them.
That's good information moving forward, because as we have those discussions, um, um, first Monday of next month, um, you know, that should be part of the conversation to at least have the conversation about it, because we'd hate to spend, because I think they're requesting...
There's two requests.
Yeah, there's, uh, 38,000 and...
57.
Yeah, 57,000. So that's a substantial amount of money that, uh, the REC board could put into those fields. But I would be hesitant should that go to waste, so to speak.
Your Honor and Councilmember, members of the council, I think that's something to, um, pay attention to. If the phytoremediation program does move forward and we find that this pilot study would work towards a full implementation, you would have no hesitation investing in those fields, because we wouldn't be digging up any of the waste that's buried underneath them. So you could then improve, um, the surface. It's just that threat of, uh, potentially doing another remediation strategy, uh, and that would be a dig and haul.
Any idea of the timeframe on the results?
Mr. Chairman, Your Honor, no, not at this time.
Are we talking months, years? Any idea?
Likely years.
Thank you. You can carry on with your report. I appreciate you being patient with. This was good discussion. I mean, it's good to know, and I think it's good for anybody who's listening to know.
It's a serious investment of public money, Your Honor, so it's, it's, uh, an imperative conversation so that we adequately use it, even if we held on to some for future usage. That would make some sense, too.
Absolutely. I have a few other items just to touch on. I had opportunity to go to Cheyenne, um, early part of this week and participate in some legislative, um, opportunities. And then also the, uh, Board Meeting for the Wyoming Airport Coalition. We had, uh, several legislators show up to our open house, and it was a good opportunity to promote, I think, airports and air service across the entire state. And I was very grateful to come back home and make it before the storm hit. As reported in your weekly report, um, the city of Riverton had two grant applications for the ARPA monies, and they passed the first threshold. Um, we look forward to seeing how the Office of State lands an investment, um, filters them further. We do know that, uh, this upcoming Monday and Tuesday, SLIB will be considering those applications. And we hope to, to have a favorable result in that. Uh, the Fremont Air Service Team was able to submit an application to the MOVE Committee. And that committee is Fremont County's Half Percent Citizen Steering Committee. FAST is seeking additional funds to support commercial air service, and we hope to hear, uh, the county's, um, recommendation on that very soon as well. And speaking of the legislative session, there's only two weeks left of a session that has seemed longer than most. There've been a lot of, uh, bills that have come and gone. There are still a few that would impact us that we're, we're paying attention to. And I'll just briefly reference a few of them. Um, in particular, the direct distribution. Um, as, as you already know, as part of our budgeting process, we receive monies from the state of Wyoming. The governor's budget, um, infused another 26 million into the direct distribution process. And we hope that that passes the legislature, because those funds are very critical, especially when we look at our capital projects and the community service contracts that we provide as a city. We hope that that one passes, and I know that it is pending out from the Committee of the Whole. There have been some liquor license bills that have come through. One that has passed centers on the population requirement for bar and grill licenses. And that legislation also states that the population requirement will ultimately be removed in 2033, which would open up more opportunity within our community and communities of the state for those types of licenses. There's a Senate file on a, a bill that's related to pharmacies and pharmaceuticals. We're, we're heavily watching this one in that it will potentially increase the cost for our health insurance and the cost for prescriptions. Um, we don't know exactly how that's gonna work through the, um, House right now, but we are paying attention. And then there's, uh, another one that could impact air service contracts and other contracts. This is a, I think, a bill that has a lot of, uh, positive intent, but there are some external consequences that, uh, potentially impact us down the line, and we are paying attention. And then finally, there's a, a bill that is pretty interesting. This is relating to public works contracts. Right now, the state statutes that, um, explains that for any improvements above 35,000, you have to go to a sealed bid system. This legislation increases that threshold to 75,000. It also has verbiage that if you aren't able to receive, um, bids or quotes for equipment and vehicles, you can, um, do a direct procurement for any equipment or vehicle up to $250,000. So that would cover lease vehicle, pickup truck, and even a garbage truck. Those are a few items that I thought would be important to bring up as we're in the home stretch of the legislative session. I appreciate everybody's efforts in, in paying attention to that. And, Your Honor, if it's okay, I'd like to defer the last of my report to Mr. Eggleston to give us a report on the snow that's coming in and the blizzard. Um, obviously, as a community, we have responsibility to provide services and to care for our community. Um, this storm is projected to be one that could have, uh, significant impact. And outside of what we're doing just with our snow removal and ice response, um, our other city services need to be paying attention to our residents to help them, um, because it could be impactful. So, Mr. Eggleston?
Thanks, Kyle. Your Honor, members of the council, before I get into that, I would like to give you the totals of snow removal up through the 9th of February. From November 3rd through February 9th, uh, city crews, with the assistance for part of a week from Viper Underground, hauled 2,567 loads of snow off the streets, which, uh, came to about 1,441,800 cubic feet, or 28,800,000. which came to about 1,441,800 cubic feet or 28,836,000 pounds. And we're still hauling.
Wow.
So, just a little?
That's a little snow.
That's a little bit of snow.
Your honor, can I ask a quick question? How does that compare to an average year?
Oh, this is way bad.
Like three, four times?
My professional.
Way bad.
This is more.
Like way more, okay.
Kyle, I guess you were previously Public Works Director. More snow than you think you've had since you've been here that we've had to haul off the streets?
Oh, without a question. I confirm Mr. Eggleston's report that this is way bad.
That's the technical jargon that you're using?
Yeah, and I know that's going to be the headline out of this meeting, but we don't have statistics readily available for last year, but I can attest that what we have done has been significantly more than in previous years. The fact that we looked at engaging a third-party contractor to assist us just stated how much snow we've been dealing with this year.
And have used. I mean, I think that's important for people to know. We were seeing that there was an issue with being able to, once we have the blowers, we were sitting there and having that go into our trucks and then having some waiting around going on. And we enlisted the help of local contractor to help out with getting some snow out of the street and having lower wait time for our snow blowers. So I appreciate that. That I think was a very wise move. Anyway, Mr. Eggleston.
As far as the next 24 hours of snowstorm, we have a crew that started at five o'clock tonight, five people. They'll be manning the plows and sanders and clearing intersections till five o'clock in the morning, when the second crew will take over and work through the duration of the storm. It's supposed to schedule right now, at least hopefully end by six o'clock tomorrow night. If it doesn't, the crews that got off this morning, or in the morning at five, will be back to cover tomorrow evening. Helping us, we're having to work 12-hour shifts, but hopefully just for the short duration during the storm.
All right.
That's the plan right now. We're using personnel from streets and alleys, obviously. Sanitation, collections and distribution. And if we need more, we'll pull from the sewer plant.
Okay.
Right now, that's the plan.
Sounds good. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Butterfield? All right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate, I know it's not pleasant to have snow in the streets. I get that. I agree. I would rather not have snow in the street either. But, you know, there's a lot of things to consider in terms of if we've got packed streets, for example, we don't necessarily want to go and break that up. And a lot of these areas that have it, when we have bad ruts, definitely, you know, if it's starting to turn into issues, let us know areas that need to be addressed. I've had a couple of citizens reach out to me with different areas that they've said, hey, is this going to be addressed? And we talked about it, and sure enough, within a couple of days, we've got crews out there and they're doing excellent work, and I really appreciate all the work that they've been putting in. And I thank you very much, Mr. Eggleston and Mr. Butterfield, for hauling away 2,500 loads of snow, 1 million cubic feet?
2,567, I believe, truckloads. Twenty-eight million pounds.
I'm glad you didn't put it in my yard. I don't have room for that much snow. I've had a few people call me with different things, and I wanted to bring up just, I suppose, a reminder. We do have, you know, we have a lot of different people in the city of Riverton. Race, creed, religion, all of it. We've just got a lot of different folks. And I would remind you that if you have a walkway that has a corner where we have ADA compliant, what do you call that? Perforated areas that are mainly for folks that are hearing impaired, or hearing impaired, sight impaired. Doesn't have anything to do with hearing. But where we have sight impaired, like what do we call those? A pad or what's the technical?
Truncated domes.
Thank you. We'll call it a pad. If you've got a bumpy thing there, we do have people out here in our community who have issues seeing. They use a white cane. They use those truncated domes. And so I would encourage you that if your property adjoins an area like that, please clear that section. It makes a huge difference for people that are, have issues with being able to see, to be able to still function and be able to get out and get the activity that they need. And so please, I would remind you, you do have an obligation to clear your sidewalks. And I would encourage you, although I know it's difficult when you have a shovel and you're trying to shovel the bumpy area of your sidewalk, it's a pain, but I would encourage you to do your best to get those areas cleared, especially for those who have poor eyesight or who may be blind. So I've had an opportunity to meet with a lot of different individuals. I met with the downtowners. They have been approved for participation in the Wyoming Main Street program. Excited about that. A lot of the focus that they have is on beautification and improving the downtown area. The Wyoming Main Street program requires you to have kind of a limited section that is kind of the downtown area that they will work with to help improve. And right now, that is going to be that, I think they'd said, from Maine and federal up to, I think it's Second Street West, is as far as that's going to go. Now, that doesn't mean that we're not going to ignore the rest of town. That's just where the Wyoming Main Street program is going to be focusing in assisting the downtowners. Their hope, as well as mine, would be that as we can show that we can make the improvements and improve as we go, that we can expand that area. Because there's a lot of Riverton that you could consider downtown that could always, you know, use any sort of improvement we can provide, whether it's beautification or whatever. So that's an exciting prospect, and we'll try to work with them. Edge, of course, met just this last week. Very grateful that Mia Harris is representing the city for that group. She is a very helpful resource. And they will now have the application period. So this is the half-cent funds that are discretionary. So 30% of it goes towards transportation. 70% of it is meant to going towards economic development. So they will be opening up the application period for the full month of March. So that's from March 1st to March 31st. The intention would be to have presentations in April before the Edge Committee. And then that would be brought before the council. The idea would be in May. And then we would vote on it and make decisions then. Right now, it's not official, but the idea is to, this will continue quarterly. Of course, we're going to kind of see how things go, if it's going to be something that we're going to keep to quarterly, if it will be different. But that's, for right now, what was voted on and approved was March. So I would encourage you, please, if you have a business, if you are trying to do something that can help the city of Riverton to develop, come up with your proposals, present them to the Edge Committee. We do have the application that's available on the city of Riverton webpage. If you go to just the main page there, so rivertonwy.gov. And let's see, if you go down to where we have news, so just scroll down after news and events, it says right there, Edge Committee Economic Development Funding Application. You can click on that, and it'll take you there to where you can get the application. We have a lot of entrepreneurial spirit in Riverton. I would encourage people to tap into that and come up with ideas of things that we can do to help the city and present them to Edge. See what they think. I'm really excited about that going forward. The next thing I wanted to talk about, I had the opportunity to attend Rotary today. Because Kyle was stuck, I went to Rotary. I ate his lunch. It was good. We had, we have gumbo, jambalaya. Had jambalaya twice today. A lot of jambalaya. So we learned about the Bootstrap Collaborative. The Bootstrap Collaborative is a really exciting program that is run right now through Central Wyoming College. And what they do is they are there to assist businesses. That's the whole point. If you're somebody who's wanting to grow your business or coming up with business ideas, I would recommend you get together with the Bootstrap Collaborative. That's through, Drew Freeman was the one who presented today. One of the things he talked about is, as you're running a business, you might be like, oh, I'm not the best with QuickBooks. I'm not the best with finances. And so part of what they do is they will get you connected with individuals in the community that can help. They will actually get you with someone who can help with finances, get you with someone who can help with legal issues. It could either be offered at no cost to the person who's needing the help, or they might volunteer, or whatever it is. They arrange that, they work it out. So that is, I would really encourage our local businesses to use that. And the way that Mr. Freeman put it is, he said, a lot of things, a lot of programs around the city are just trying to get money. And he said, we're trying to do what we can to give it away. So it's always good when somebody says that. And part of that is assisting businesses and running their business better. So I would encourage any folks here that are involved in small businesses in Riverton, reach out. We also have our goal setting that we will have next week. I'm looking forward to, as a council, we're going to get together and discuss what we want to be doing and going forward for the next fiscal year. I had an opportunity to attend two fundraisers. One of them was for the FFA. I'm going to tell you, the FFA is just an incredible organization. The youth that were involved in that, and I try not to use the word kids because some of them are 16 and 17, and they don't like to be called kids. So the youth that are involved in that, I was so impressed. We'd have some of the adults that would be saying, hey, go grab this table, go do this, and they just jumped on it. Like, they were moving the whole time. The kids were just moving. They were getting things done. And they really did well at pulling off a fundraiser. It was fun. The food was good. They had a great silent auction. And so I really appreciated their hard work. And it still continues to be FFA Week. Let's see, until the 25th. It was the 18th to the 25th, I think. So we still have our bounders on Main Street to celebrate that and recognize that. And the last one was, I had an opportunity to go to a fundraiser tonight for Abbas House. Also a good experience and a good opportunity. We have a lot of different fundraisers in Riverton, and I would encourage you to stay up on them with Go Riverton. They have them there. And we have a lot of, just a lot of worthy causes here. And I would encourage you to attend and participate. And even if you're somebody that likes a deal, they had a $500 gift certificate for a company that rivals Mr. Bailey's that I won't name, but RTO. Anyway, they had a $500 gift certificate for RTO that the highest bid was at 450. So RTO had donated that. The person that bid on it was able to get $50 off their next set of tires. So, I mean, even if it's something like that and you just like deals, go, you know, participate in these fundraisers. It's a great opportunity. So that was all I think I had. We do have an executive session for personnel and litigation. So the chair would entertain a motion to convene into the executive session for the purpose of personnel pursuant to Wyoming Statute 164405A2 and/or 164405A10 and litigation pursuant to Wyoming Statute 164405A3.
So moved, your honor.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Borders, second by Councilwoman Cox. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion passes. Chair invites city administrator. Anyone else that we need there?
Your honor, we have Kristen as well.
And we also have our city clerk. Thank you. So we are convened into executive session at 8:20 PM.